Meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort and the governing body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And I'm going to go ahead and lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Are there any new employees to be introduced? Okay, seeing no new employees, we're going to go. And county council, are there any reportable actions from closed session?
No.
Okay. So are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to pull item 13 because county council hasn't had a chance to review the contract, so that will go on to the next meeting. Okay, so at this point, we will now hear some brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor McClure, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Certainly. Mine's going to be very brief. I traveled to Marin for the coastal commission meeting, and I think one of the significant discussions that we had was the importance of protecting farmland and making sure that farmers are able to continue with their crops, and how can the coastal act be more engaged in a positive fashion? And so I thought that was a really good discussion, and in fact, I think it's Marin County has come up with some really good language that I will forward here so we can make sure that we're working on making sure that farms are protected and are able to continue with their jobs. I also, we had the RCTA meeting, and RC, that's the transit authority for the bus system, and there are going to be $163,000 off budget for the incoming year, and they're talking about reducing services in different ways, and so we really need to be aware of this. There's going to be an, they wanted us to adopt it at the meeting, and we chose not to because we felt that the user groups had not really been able to weigh in yet, and so is it STA meeting? Gary, the, there's a user group that meets, and they, we felt that they should have to look at the recommendations first because some of the recommendations were wanting to not have same-day request on dialeride, which would be devastating, and they wanted to lift the dialeride same day and get rid of the language that said that they would be there within 90 minutes. And that, we have a lot of seniors that use that dialeride service, so that was kind of a wait, we're not ready to make this kind of decision. So that was one of the things. They talked about taking the Route 199 from six days back to three days, and they talked about possibly being closed on certain holidays, and they also talked about weekday service ending at 6:30 in the evening. So we really have to, as a community, weigh in on how, what we want for our bus service because those are pretty dramatic cuts, and we held off, and like I say, we're, you weren't there, so I wasn't going to agree to 199. And that's pretty much what I've been doing, other than in my private life, doing a lot of other things.
Okay. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you, Mike. After the, our last board meeting, which was held in Klamath, the board went down to the Klamath Townsite Boat Ramp, which we dedicated that and cut the ribbon. Pretty nice-looking facility. I had a, an RC and D, an RC and D meeting, and this time of year, most, all of the groups that I'm meeting with are talking budget, so we're looking at budget and budget issues. There was a travel management meeting put on by the Forest Service down at the lighthouse, at the Lighthouse Inn, where they had quite a little bit of staff to explain the road closures and the road restoration, and that doesn't mean that they're going to put the road back in great shape, that means they're going to take the road out, and decommissioning of some roads. So there was a quite, it was a pretty good turnout. It was very, the acoustics were not great in there, there was a lot of people, so it was very noisy, very hard to hear, but there certainly was a lot of interest in that, and still is. Had a local transportation commission meeting, and again, we, you know, like I said, these, most of our talks are about budget. We did an amended budget for this year, and we approved our budget for next year. I had a solid waste management authority agenda review. That meeting will be later today at 3:30. After, after the travel, the public travel management plan, we had a coordination meeting with the Forest Service. They're trying to keep the county itself involved in the issues that the county sees with, with this travel management plan that they've got. There's a lot of, a lot of missing roads, a lot of items that are not included. We went over most of those things, and we'll see if that, if any of that reflects on the next scoping meeting that they have, and that's going to be held in Gasky at the, at Gasky Mountain School tomorrow, I think at 5:30, 5:00 or 5:30 tomorrow. And I also worked with staff to prepare later, a letter that's in our agenda packet today to provide to the Forest Service on the travel management plan, a statement of, of what we feel needs to be done. Had a local RCD meeting, which is the Local Resource Conservation District. I didn't have a lot of time, so I just sat in for a few minutes for a public comment. I made a trip over to Willows for a new group that I was asked to attend, which is the, it's called the Forest Sustainable Action Coalition, and actually, I had it on the, or it was supposed to be on the agenda today, but hopefully will be on the next agenda that we have, to get appointed to that, to represent the board at these meetings. Pretty good group, 19 counties represented, and their issues, the issues are the SRS monies, NEPA planning, stewardship, travel management, catastrophic fire, you know, fuels reductions to try to keep the, keep any catastrophic fires, and to manage the forests more so than what it's been, what we feel it's been in the past. So really a great group. The next meeting is in June, where they're supposed to be, I think there's like 12 congress, congressman representatives, and, and at least one senator from California, along with a regional forester. Supposed to all be meeting on the 15th. We'll see how, how that goes. Like I said, hopefully I'll get appointed to that and be able to attend that meeting. And we had a LAFCO meeting, which, same thing, budget stuff, and that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McNamara.
Yes. I also attended the boat ramp dedication. Would like to have seen a little better turnout for all the work and the years that go into getting something like that put together. It would, would have been nice to have had a little more support. Was invited to Tea Party Potluck, where several, several of us spoke. Sat in on the local agency formation commission for Supervisor Sullivan while he was out of town. I was a guest at the Nooners Rotary Club luncheon, and I'd never been before, well, probably about eight, nine years ago, but the morning club, this one was great. Talked about a bunch of comedians, and they really know how to make a meeting fun. I wish our meetings could have a little more humor and fun to them, a little more relaxed. I also went to the Republican Women's Luncheon, where Tom, yeah, I hope I've got this name right, if anybody can tell me, Dell?
Barcaro? Becaro? I think Becaro has lost him.
I, I had Tom Dell Becaro.
Dell Becaro.
Becaro. Anyway, I should have remembered it because we saw him three times. He is the chairman for the State of California's Republican Central Committee, and after that meeting, that same evening, we went to Terraro's for another talk from him, and then after that, we went across the street to the town hall meeting for another, another talk with him. But he's a very interesting speaker. It really was not as bad as it sounds, listening to him three times, because he really changed it up a lot, and really was so full of information, very useful information. And then I also attended LAFCO last evening, and as Supervisor Hemmingson said, we had a public hearing to amend the budget, and it was actually to include travel registration and registration for a member of our commission to attend an annual Cal- LAFCO conference, but because of the economy and everything, we all decided that we would not send anyone to attend that meeting this year. And we are going to be skipping the June meeting, so it will meet again in July. And that was about it for me.
Thank you, Supervisor McNamara. So first of all, I apologize, I was out of town at a training in St. Louis during the last board meeting that we had in Klamath, so that's the reason I was out. Attended the trade agency board meeting, had a meeting with Laura Olson of the California Endowment, attended a, the joint meeting with the Curry County Board of Commissioners, which I thought went really well, and hopefully we'll be able to coordinate a lot more stuff with Curry County. Seems that they're meeting much harder at budget times than we are at this point. Had a meeting with Monte Mendon Hall of Pacific Power regarding Rule 20, which has to do with undergrounding utilities, and we looked at a couple places in Crescent City and Delnort, and that's something we'll bring back further, just to kind of push the item along. There's over a million dollars available to underground utilities, which sounds like a lot, but after you start doing the math, it really doesn't encompass a huge area. So we're trying to see what will have the biggest bang for your buck, and that may not be just solely in the county, although the county's pot of money is bigger than the cities, it may be somewhere within the city limits, maybe the most appealing to do it. Had agenda review twice, met with Stacy Lawson, who's a congressional candidate for District Two, and she spoke to the Delnort Farm Bureau, and had a lot of good things to say, and I'm looking forward to seeing what, what happens with the upcoming primary. And according to the way the law's written now, too, that it doesn't matter what percentage of the vote you get, there is a runoff between the top two. So somebody could get, you know, essentially get more than 50% of the vote, and they're still going to have to go to the runoff in November. So I think that's a piece of legislation that, that's, that's the part, I think, that wasn't really well-written on that. Had a two-by-two or coordination meeting with the Forest Service with Supervisor Hemmingson. You know, just when you think you're that close to getting this issue resolved, that seems to be going on for years now at this point, that we get an about-face.
It seems so, it has.
Yeah, seems like it's been going on for decades. I am hoping that the end result is that we will come to some type of agreement going forward with the Forest Service. I, after our meeting, I have my doubts, because what we all seem to come to consensus on a facilitated meeting we had with environmental groups in the county and user groups, the plan that's coming out right now doesn't look anything like it. So that's the, that's the disappointing part of it. Now, we are still in talks with them, so that's the encouraging thing, but I don't know at the rate we're going. It's, it's a wonder if we'll, if we'll get to that point where they have a finalized road inventory. Met with, had a meeting, as well as Supervisor McNamara, with California Republican Chairman, Tom Dell Becario, and I liked what he had to say. It was refreshing, it's the first time I've seen a chairman of the Republican Party come up to Delnort County, and it was a very refreshing speech, basically. He had some really good ideas. Saw the eclipse at some friend's house, and actually, it was my second eclipse to see. Saw the one in 1994, when I was in the Peace Corps in Paraguay, that came right over the pueblo I was at. My son wasn't that impressed, though, so he was like, oh, okay, I'm going to go play with Legos. And then tonight, we've, or not tonight, but tomorrow night, I would encourage people that, that want to have some input into the Forest Service roads inventory to attend the scoping meeting in Gasky. I'm not going to be able to attend, I'll be at, they have, the annual Farm Bureau Dinner is the same, at the same time, so there's a conflict in that, so. Other than that, we will go on to, at this point, we'll receive a brief report from the county administrator officer. Jay?
Very briefly, we've recently been in contract negotiations with public defenders, and hope to have an agreement before the board. I would hope by the end of June. We're pretty close, they're coming back with a proposal to tweak the existing process, and we'll see if that's suitable for presenting to the board at that point. Most of our time has been provided to meeting with different departments on the budget, and also reviewing the May revises that came out last week. The, one of the primary issues that's been discussed lately is also AB 109 and the allocation. The allocation was presented last year, or last week, that will be presented to the governor, and we'll see. Right now, it doesn't look like it's going to have the adequate funding to offset the costs, but some counties came out better than others. Point St. George, the RFP for the environmental documentation went out. It is now going to be out for approximately two to three weeks. We hope to get multiple responses. This is for ultimately Phase Two, which would be the development of the trail, the coastal trail through Point St. George, that this would be to do also construction drawings for the parking lot at the end. It's been a long time coming, and we hope that we're in time to be able to hit all of the environmental surveys that need to be done this year, and not have to have another extension if we can get one. And a little bit more time reviewing the Forest Service travel management plan and providing comments based on the two-by-two, to be able to provide a statement to them regarding that meeting.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, we are going to go on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda excluding item number 13.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any public comment, excuse me, comment on items on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing no public comment on that, we'll bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions? Okay, Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number nine and number 14 for a conflict of interest.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, inside of the consent agenda, we had two items, which were proclamations, and Supervisor McNamara has the voting in National Safe Voting Week proclamation. Leslie, if you want to read that, please.
Okay. Board of Supervisors, County of Delnort, State of California, sorry about that. Proclamation designates the week of May 19 through May 25, 2012, as National Safe Voting Week in Delnort County. Whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in voting-related accidents in the United States. Nearly 70% of these fatalities caused by drowning, and significant number of these voters would be alive today had they worn life jackets. And whereas in 2011, the members of Flotilla 8-11 of Delnort County volunteered 13,270 hours in educating the voting public and in U.S. Coast Guard mission support. And whereas in 2011, 8-11 completed 63 free vessel exams were performed by Flotilla vessel examiners. And whereas Flotilla 8-11 of Delnort County will continue its efforts to educate the voting public by offering voting classes and free vessel examinations, promote safe voting, and encourage the wearing of life jackets. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort does hereby designate the week of May 19 through the, through May 25, 2012, as National Safe Voting Week in Delnort County, and urges all users of all inland lakes, rivers, coastal waters, and the Crescent City Bay area to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when voting, attend a safe voting course, exercise safe voting practices, and adopt the slogan of "Wear It." Passed and adopted this 22nd day of May, 2012. Do we have someone to receive this today?
I think, uh, Beverly St.
Oh, and in uniform. Excuse me, Ben.
How hard is Jill? Good to see you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
First, I always have to talk something, I have to say something. It is National Safe Voting Week, so consider that that is national, this is across the nation, and we participate in this, but as in Delnort County, we practice this all year long, and we watch our mariners, and most of these numbers are related to the recreational fleet. We also service the commercial fleet down there with boat exams and safety decals for them, and last year, we did 42 of those, even though many of our boats had no place to tie up. So I was pretty proud of our fleet here for their safety. Jill Munger was with her crew last week, all week long, in the schools, and they talked between 600 and 800 students between the ages of kindergarten and third grade to empower them to wear their life jackets. Kids don't float, and so we push that very hard. This one here is a little baby one, and this goes on our babies with a little head float, and of course, this is like a mom and cat, you can snatch them back out of the water. We're surrounded by water here, rivers, lakes, and the ocean, and many parents are not educated that if a child goes in the water, exactly what they should do and how this should fit on them. We fit from this size up to the adult size, and the biggest gap that we have, which is very, very difficult, we're working on the industry for this, they go from 50 to 90 pounds, and then from 90 pounds, we go to this adult universal. And this is ridiculous, because we have many children that are maybe 100 pounds, 110, 115 pounds, under the age of 12. And I know that Mr. John Pritchard has this down, because we did this the other day.
Nice.
And if, he would come up here and show us how this fits on an adult. Mr. Pritchard, come on down.
Come on, John.
Come on down. Mike Sullivan is really smiling right now because he got out of it. We did this the other day, and there's a proper fit to this.
Could we zoom in the camera on this one? I think the audience, the, 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 wants to see this.
Parents always want to over-size their children every year.
Johnny needs a little help.
Oops, wrong. Right.
There we go.
There we go. So as we do this, we make sure that these sides, we weigh every child and put every child in one of these.
I don't think we have any scales, Bob.
Make sure that this fits here. Is he making sarcastic remarks up there?
It's Mr. Sullivan's there, but we do not have to pay attention to it.
I see.
I was going to say, John, I bet you get fined for this, too.
And so as we fit these children.
I think it's kind of nice that he wore the same, the right color of that.
Yeah, it meshes with you, your blue shirt.
One of the things that we do after we fit these is we educate the parent on how this should fit, and then we grab the child right here, and when we lift it up, make sure that it doesn't come over their ears.
Yeah, I'd like to see you do that.
Because if it does, it is too big for them, which this one does not. You are such a good sport, Mr. Pritchard.
Yeah, I guess so, even.
Well, I didn't bring the scale.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we will be doing this on June 2nd, down at the lifeguard, lifeguard, the ramp down by the recreational boat side. These are free, and the way we get these is, the Friends of the Auxiliary raises money for this, and then enables us to buy these, and then we give these away to the little guys, and first come, first served, and we have a nice program. We also are entertaining with the, working with the Eureka Flotilla as well. They came up and went in the schools with us, and they also will be there to see how we do this, so that they can maybe get that going there. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
How big is that little one? How, that one fits up to what size?
This one goes up to 30 pounds. So a little baby that's very round, you know, would be fit in here, but 30 pounds. It has the crotch strap so that it can't climb over their head, and the pillow to help float the little baby's head. But we see many people, they don't have them, and we try and empower the child that you don't go on a boat unless everybody's got them on, and of course, dad may be there with a beer, and so it's very, very difficult for a small child sometimes to say, no, I don't want to go on that boat.
What's good, you had your, your model with you here, too, so.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beverly. Thanks. We also have a second proclamation for the Emergency Medical Services Week, and that is Supervisor McClure.
Yes, I, the EMS board, it's going to be the week of May 20 through the 26th is the Emergency Services Week, and as sitting on the EMS board, we decided we would like to make sure that every, of the three counties that are involved, that we would actually have a proclamation, to make sure that the honor is given to, to the emergency services workers. Proclamation to the Delnort County Board of Supervisors, designating the week of May 20 through the 26, 2012, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital part of the public sector, and whereas the member of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, the members of the medical, of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now. Therefore, the Delnort County Board of Supervisors, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through 26 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS, more than a job, a calling, I would encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and if you see a firefighter, an EMS worker, or anybody that is stepping up, just kind of put your hand out and shake a hand and say, thank you very much, because we live in such a remote part of the world. Without emergency medical services people, we would be in dire shape, so, thank you. And I think there's some people here.
Thank you, Mark, on behalf of.
Please approach the mic.
On behalf of the delivery ambulance.
Center Coast Hospital, all the fire departments, and the administrative staff of all those departments, also the first responders in law enforcement, state and national parks, we appreciate the acknowledgement of the role that EMS plays in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, at this point, we also had something else passed in the consent agenda, and we didn't really have it on the schedule for today, but I want to go ahead and recognize Chairman Miller from the Elk Valley Rancheria. There's a agreement between the County of Delnort and Elk Valley regarding the Humboldt Road Project. Chairman Miller, if you'd like to say a few comments? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Any way, anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Didn't know I was gonna be speaking today, but anyhow, I appreciate recognition, uh, for Elk Valley and, and appreciate the county and your county council and, and CEO for working with us. It's been a long, long thing going on. Of course, we all know that the resort project hasn't been built yet, but we're still working on it, and this is an important step, uh, towards being able to get that done. Uh, hopefully, we can get that road done out there and, and, uh, that resort built. Of course, at present time, we probably are going to do a phase-type project just because of the economy and the ability to finance that project, which is a huge project when it's totally done, so, uh, but we're working at it really hard, uh, to try to get started on the thing, uh, late, late this year or start building it next year, so, hopefully. Excellent. Thank you.
Good. We're glad to ha- have the project go forward with, that's a couple million dollars in Delnor County that wouldn't become otherwise.
Right. Money's in the bank. That's kinda unusual, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, and also I have, uh, the forms, uh, for yourself to sign and, and maybe I give them to your, your county council, and they can handle that, and then it's gotta go to the Bureau of Indian Affairs after that, so...
Yeah, definitely. But, thanks, Ellen. Okay, uh, moving on to item, uh, we'll go to budget tran- oh, we have, actually, we're public comment now, so, at this point, uh, let me jump to public comments. Timed item at ten-thirty, members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and also give your name and resonance, uh, when you, when you get up to the mic for the record. Any public comment?
Good morning, Chairman Sullivan and Supervisors. I recently, uh, gave you a presentation...
Zach, you wanna...
Um, Zach Larson, Zach Larson and Associates, uh, two hundred Douglas Park Drive, Crescent City. Recently gave you a presentation about our two-year dual-frequency identification sonar pilot study. Uh, it's a fish counting station on the Smith River at the Fred Haight Boat Launch Facility, and I wanted to give you an update that we had submitted a, a proposal for three additional years of funding, and, uh, that was successfully funded, or successfully submitted to the Department of Fish and Game, uh, before the deadline. Unfortunately, there is still a funding gap for this next season, and I don't know if that was entirely clear, um, during my last presentation, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I've been working to try to backfill, uh, and fill that funding gap, and the reason for that funding gap actually was the Department of Fish and Game was going to give us a third year, uh, but they didn't consider the administrative costs that the county would incur, and so we rejected, um, that amendment to, that would've made it three years, so, uh, but the department has been able to find some funds for about sixty percent of the project, and I'm working with Cal Trout and others, uh, to try to find the remaining funds. So it's looking good, and, um, so, if we do get, um, funded for this third year, we should have a pretty good look at, uh, our salmon running the Smith, and hopefully we'll have several years down the road. Additionally, I wanted to mention, um, the Smith River Alliance has some funding. They want to donate to the project as a cost match, and I'm gonna have to come before you again during your June meeting to request that you guys can accept that money. I'm not sure exactly how much it is. And then finally, uh, regarding the Marine Life Protection Act, uh, the California Fish and Game Commission is expected to, um, adopt the, uh, new array for MPAs off our coast on June sixth, uh, at the Red Lion Inn, uh, in Eureka, so...
Zach, if we, if I could, um, before, if we can make a request that after that's done, that you can come present to the board and show us what we've got?
Sure. I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
Zach, has there been any changes in what was originally submitted?
Well, I had forwarded, um, an email and a, a copy of a letter that we had submitted to the Fish and Game Commission, actually, a suite, or a group of people from Mendocino to, uh, here in Crescent City, and I, the city had adopted a similar letter to that, and, uh, I think it's, it's, we're pretty strong that we're gonna get what, uh, the Blue Ribbon Task Force had last decided on, which was basically the, um, stakeholder array, so...
Okay, cool. Um, one other thing, that, the Ditzin project, can it differentiate between Coho salmon?
It cannot. Um, we are using run timings as a basis for differentiating runs. Also, we're using the hatchery data that actually has fish in hand, so they can tell the difference between Coho and Chinook, plus spawner surveys, angler surveys, and other, uh, means to try to come at that, but, yes.
How much money are we looking for?
For the Ditzin project.
For the gap, what are we looking for?
Uh, I think it's about forty thousand dollars, so, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, it's looking good to this point, and I'll give you an update.
Are they working on any programming that could differentiate between the...
They are working on, uh...
Because that might be another source for money.
Yes, there's a lot of people working with the software to try to get at that question. Um, yes, and I will give you any updates as far as that goes, but you can clearly see a fish. It's just a steelhead and a Coho, or, you know, approximately the same size, and then a smaller Chinook, so it is difficult to differentiate between those species, but, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Zach. Um, we're gonna go, any, any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm Victoria Dickie. I live in the county. Um, I want to thank you, first off, for being the courteous board that you are. Um, I went to the city council last night. I found the, um, board to be basically rude, demeaning, inappropriate, and wrong. Factually wrong. You listen, that's really what people usually want when they go to a board. If they're heard, they feel that they've done their civic duty and that they have at least some opportunity to interreact with the people who supposedly represent them. I commend you. Second thing I wanted to talk about is when I went into the, um, board's, uh, meeting area upstairs where your offices are, um, Supervisor McNamara was there and Supervisor Finnegan, I had application for the Solid Waste Task Force, and, uh, I was told that I was to hand it into the county up there. I was told by the two supervisors, it goes to the city, they will make a recommendation. And then I presume that's going to go in front of the ten this afternoon. I don't think it comes to you next, does it, or, I don't know the procedure after that. Anyway, two people did make, um, applications. Uh, there are two openings for sure, maybe three. Uh, the, the city council determined that they're gonna put this off for two weeks because no one, these were some of the statements made, no one from the city had applied. These were only county residents that had applied to be put on the board, and they appeared to want to put on a city staff member. Uh, they also said they were unclear on what the procedure would be, uh, what they were to do, so they told their attorney to find out what they're supposed to do. I believe it was recorded, you can look at it yourself. The attorney's to get back to them in two weeks. The conclusion that I drew was that they did not do the job that you requested that they do. I'm requesting that you instruct them to either do it or take it back from them. I will be at the meeting this afternoon, Lord willing, um, and, um, I, I felt that they were just totally inappropriate to these two young men who came in, volunteered their time, took time out of their schedule, they asked what they thought, and they said, no reflection on you, but we're not gonna do anything right now until... I mean, is this rocket science to put someone on the trash, uh, committee? So I want to report it to you because I think you are the other half. Um, I'm disappointed Mr. Finnegan isn't here. He's supposed to represent me.
He's in Mexico right now for representing the county.
Where?
He's in New Mexico representing the county.
Oh, nuts.
He's in New Mexico representing the county.
I hope there aren't any clowns there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'll close the public comment session, and I think we're, uh, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt the budget transfers?
I would move that we adopt, uh, budget transfer zero five dash zero eight, zero five dash zero nine, zero five dash ten, zero five dash twelve, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen on your agenda.
Second. Can move the second. Any public comment on budget transfers? Okay, seeing no public comment, Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we are gonna go under a timed item, next timed item, uh, ten forty, presentation by Greg Burns, which is, who is our federal legislative advocate, uh, with Van, Van Sock and Associates. I'm sure I mispronounced it.
Skoyak.
Skoyak, the Van guys.
We have a, a helpful acronym for our firm's name, VSA.
VSA.
So feel free to use that in the future, but, um, yes, I am Greg Burns with Van Skoyak Associates, VSA. Greetings from Washington. Um, let's see, where to begin? I, I never know, you know, whether I should give you a flavor of, uh, what's going on there, but you all read the newspapers and you see it's as dysfunctional as ever. Um, so really, I don't want to bring down the mood, uh, and I won't really give an overall update on how things are going, but, um, there are a number of items that I did want to bring you all up to speed on that we've been working on, on your behalf. Uh, this is not gonna encapsulate everything because that would take far too long, um, but one of the items that we have been working on very actively over the past, really several years, frankly, ever since we've been engaged, is something that's probably you all are thinking about, is the secure rural schools funding. Uh, it has yet to be reauthorized. It's now expired. Uh, the program has expired. There is no, no additional funding, as you all know well, are well aware. Right now, there has been, there have been a couple proposals made. The administration and, and its budget actually proposed more funding for secure rural schools, but basically that's about as worth the, as the piece of paper that's written on. Doesn't mean a whole lot, frankly, because Congress has to actually enact it. Um, and then there has been bipartisan, pretty roundly supported, um, standalone pieces of legislation in both the House and the Senate that have been introduced, uh, that would reauthorize the program for four years. We've discussed those proposals, I know via email and whatnot. They would continue with declining payments, which is a source of frustration, I understand, but, um, right now you sort of are happy with getting what you can, probably. Um, I'm not saying it's right, but that's probably the best bet. Uh, more recently, a one-year extension of SRS payments has been included in what's known as the Transportation Authorization Bill. That bill, SRS is probably the least controversial part of that roughly eight-hundred-page bill. The other items within it are extremely controversial, extremely difficult for the House and Senate to reconcile, and so we're not sure whether or not they'll be able to reconcile their differences. If they can, and they produce a final bill, SRS will be in there. If they cannot, then we have to find another legislative vehicle. Long story short, I firmly believe that SRS will be reauthorized. Uh, it may only be for another year at this point, and then we'll have to go back and do this again next year, but I do believe it will be reauthorized, it's just a matter of when that actually happens. You've probably heard a lot about, um, legislative items being put off until after the elections, and then they're talking about addressing a whole host of issues during what's called a lame duck session after, um, the elections have taken place. This may end up being addressed there if it's not addressed beforehand. There just aren't very many bills that are passing, given the fractured political environment that we're in. So that's where we're at with that. I definitely expect it to be positively resolved, but I don't know when. Another issue that we did actually get resolved, um, working with a broad coalition of folks, was related to the essential air service program. You'll remember that about this time last year, the House had actually proposed to eliminate the program for the lower forty-eight states. They put that in legislation. That legislation actually passed the House of Representatives. Uh, it was in a broader piece of legislation related to the Federal Aviation Administration. Then the Senate, uh, passed their bill. It didn't have nearly those, that drastic of a change. Uh, it was a, some sort of relatively reasonable changes to the program that would limit the, um, subsidy per passenger. It would also, um, restrict the program to those airports that are, or those areas that are actually significantly far from medium-sized hubs, airports, so, um, that was obviously much better. End result is they came up with that, where they basically took the Senate's position, made some reforms. Um, about ten to fifteen airports will lose essential air service once their contracts are up. You are not one of those. You have great, uh, flight numbers, so your subsidy rates are relatively low compared to a lot of other communities, and you're also significantly, um, far from Sacramento, which is your closest re, medium-sized hub airport, that there's no threat of, of your program going away at any time in the near future. So that was a big victory. Uh, there happen to be four EAS airports in the state of California. You're one of them, Visalia, Merced, and, uh, El Centro. Um, your senators both stepped up to the plate. I would give a particular kudos, actually, in this case, to Senator Boxer, who was very aggressive on this issue on behalf of, you know, the state. And the House, Mike Thompson definitely led the charge. He's been working on this for a long time, and he was right there fighting until the end, so, a lot of thanks goes to those, all of the members of your delegation. Another issue that's come up recently this year is funding for tsunami, um, networks and research and whatnot. The president, I don't have any idea as to why. I mean, I shouldn't blame it on the president because really, he doesn't sit there and decide he's just gonna stop funding tsunami networks. Uh, it's really the administration, in this case mostly NOAA, that decided, for whatever reason, this is a place where they could save money. I think you all saw last, um, year that that's not a wise choice. I mean, we all saw, the whole West Coast. Um, everybody was activated whether or not they were impacted or not. Obviously, you all were impacted, but, um, both bodies of Congress have already determined that they wholeheartedly reject the administration's approach on this issue and have restored the funding, uh, for these, um, tsunami warning systems and, and other research into the tsunamis. Um, so again, that's good, and you have a real strong advocate there in Senator Feinstein in particular because she sits on the committees that make those funding decisions. So she was right there. I mean, we went and, um, talked with her staff about it, and they said, um, you know, thanks for letting us know because we don't hear enough from, from local governments, particularly on these kinds of issues, but we're all over this. We know that this is a problem for our state. So, again, she's in the position to help, and she, she has. Another issue which you may be less familiar with, um, but I've certainly discussed it quite a bit with your staff, is related to the reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program. You know, Supervisor Finnegan, for instance, would be aware of this because of the, you know, he's a realtor, and he has to ensure that people that are in flood zones get that insurance if they, if they must have it, but, um, there's language in a current Senate bill to reauthorize this program that would, um, force residents, particularly in Klamath-Glen, but also some areas along Smith River, potentially, uh, to purchase flood insurance that don't currently have it. And these are areas that are behind flood control structures that otherwise keep them from having to purchase this insurance. Obviously, this would have a very detrimental effect on that community. Uh, not only would the insurance be expensive, but there would be associated building restrictions and whatnot that would go into effect. Basically, it would, um, it would end up, you'd end up with disinvestment, even further disinvestment in these, that community and others that would be impacted, um, and it would negatively, you know, affect the community, frankly, and it's too much to bear in this, this environment, this fiscal economic environment that we're in. So we've been working very hard with your senators to encourage them. This, this language was originally in a House provision, too, but it was amended on the floor of the House and stricken from the bill, uh, and now in the Senate, it's still in there. We've been working with your senators to convince them, um, that, that this provision also needs to be stricken, and frankly, other senators as well. Senator Feinstein actually just yesterday made the decision herself to side with, with us on this provision, and will be working to strike it from the bill if it's considered, or when it's considered on the floor. So again, another step in, in the right direction. This issue is, it's called residual risk insurance, meaning that these people, even though they're behind some sort of flood control device, they still do have some risk, so they should purchase insurance. It's too broad, it's too damaging, and it's not a good public policy, so we're gonna ensure that it gets stricken.
Greg, just for the public's information, when you talk about, um, these structures, that would be the levee down in Klamath?
Correct. Exactly.
I, I just didn't know, if there are people out there that didn't know what kind of structures we were talking about.
Exactly. The levee that was constructed by the Corps back in the sixties, I believe.
And then abandoned.
Yeah, yeah, they did. I, I just didn't know, if there are people out there that didn't know what kind of structures we were talking about.
Exactly. The levee that was constructed by the Corps back in the sixties, I believe.
And then abandoned.
Yeah, yeah.
That may, that's a separate issue, but I understand that. Yeah, and it would impact people that live downstream of dams. It would have a huge impact on the state of California. The Central Valley would all become a residual risk area as well. Frankly, well, I won't say anymore. It's just bad, bad public policy. Another issue that has recently come up is that Congress provided funding to the Economic Development Administration to help those communities that were impacted by two thousand and eleven presidential disaster areas. So that grant application has recently become available. I'm going to be working with your staff to try to develop some sort of a project that we can apply for, for these funds. There is quite a bit of money out there. It's going to go quickly because people, it's a basically first come, first serve program. EDA is tasked with spending the money quickly, so they're going to do their best to do so. But we need to work with EDA and with your staff to develop some project, or, or more than one, and try to make a run at those, because the opportunities don't always come along that often. And then there's a number of other things in which you're engaged, in which we've been engaged to some degree, whether it's, you know, annual appropriations for projects, for programs that are important to the county like CDBG or something like that, that you've all heard a lot about. I know you're very engaged still on the Forest Service road closure issue. I have some thoughts on that that I'd like to share with you all later. You've got salmon restoration is something that, that has started, started to take up some of your time. That's something I'd also like to get engaged in more as I sit down with staff and learn more about it. And then of course, our favorite topic of Forest Service acquisitions, which, you know, if anybody wanted an update, we could talk about that as well later. But for, for your update with the public, I wanted to, to talk about some of those items and thank you all for the opportunity to work with you.
Thanks Greg. Any questions for supervisors?
No, I just appreciate you being here. You know, when we talk about people in Washington DC, it's like, it's just reassuring to, to see the body here.
And, you know, I would say that while most of us in Washington are evil and bad.
I didn't say that.
No, it's true. You know, there, there are good things that are, that are occurring. Progress is never as quick as we'd like. But I really do feel good about some of the things that we have worked on and also some of the issues that you're still challenged with. So progress is, continues to be made.
It was nice to see that you could finally get here.
Yes, I was delayed for several hours yesterday in San Francisco, not due to Crescent City weather, but San Francisco weather.
That's always the case.
A bit of a frustration, but you know, what can you do?
Good sushi there.
I didn't try it, but I should do it on the return.
Yes. On this economic development monies, are there lots of strings, or is there a way, you know, is it, is it? I mean, I'm thinking like the harbor, you know, we know that, I mean, is, is it, is it down and quick kind of applications? Because we have shovel-ready projects at the harbor that are maybe possibly underfunded.
Right, and I think that there, it's meant to be a very flexible and very, I shouldn't say easy process, meant to be a very flexible funding stream, but there are some key metrics that you sort of have to meet. I mean, number one, for this money, you have to have been in an area that was declared a presidential disaster area. So you've got that, that's easy. Number two, you do have to have quantifiable job creation.
We've got that.
Disaster mitigation is definitely a benefit, if you can help mitigate against future disasters. But, you know, these are things that I think we want to flesh out. And then my plan is to get back to Washington, go to the EDA office, get their representatives on the phone on a conference call with your staff, and also the staff of EDA up in Seattle. So get all of us together and start just bouncing ideas off each other. And let's get some feedback directly from the agency, because really, that's the best way to do it. Let them almost prescreen potential applications. So that's my plan.
And it's a very short window.
Well, actually, the money's technically available until, I think, twenty fifteen.
But.
If they don't expend it, but the reality is it'll be gone before then.
Right.
There's actually a chance that if they don't spend it quickly enough, that Congress could decide to rescind the funding, basically take it back away. So we do certainly want to work quickly.
Is this going to be another instance where the project has to be shovel-ready, or is there going to be design and?
No, there actually can be design work that's done and things like that. I mean, that can be funded. So certainly, they want to get a project that's going to result in something quantifiable, you know. Doing design for the sake of design doesn't do anybody any good.
No, I know that was the issue in a lot, in a lot of folks in the community, and the listening audience may not understand that a lot of projects weren't shovel-ready when the stimulus bill came out. So it's, especially in California, the additional environmental reports required. There was, and a lot, a lot of projects didn't get done because they were great projects, but they weren't quote-unquote shovel-ready. I, I do think we also need to just kind of highlight, you kind of touched on a couple of points, and we get successes every year working with Greg and his company and contracting them as the, as our federal advocate. And the dredging at the harbor was a past success that just would not have happened without, without their involvement and as well as the, the recent EAS for, for us to continue to have commercial service at the airport. Those are million, millions of dollars that come back to the community by having an advocate. Since we are as small as we are with, without their involvement, I don't think we'd have the successes, and we'd be kind of going sideways or backwards. So I appreciate your involvement in the, in the process. Any other comments or questions from supervisors? All right, Greg, well, we'll be talking to you later then.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, we are past our next timed item, which is, or we're right on for it. Hold a public hearing regarding the request to vacate a portion of the county's right-of-way over Surf Sound Court and adopt the resolution to vacate it as requested by the Deputy Director of Engineering and Roads. Item twenty-two on the agenda, so.
I just want to point out that the notice has been published and posted as required. We are just asking for the vacation of the right-of-way for the road purposes, not for utility or any other purposes. Apparently, there are some unresolved issues between the two developments up there, and I believe there is going to be some further discussion when you open the public hearing.
Okay, so at this point, we're, we are going to officially open the, the public hearing. Okay, so at this point, we're, we're officially opening the public hearing regarding the request to vacate a portion of the county's right-of-way over Surf Sound Court and adopting the resolution to vacate it. So at this point, will, will anyone that wants to speak on this issue, please? Do we have a list available for, please approach the clerk and put your name and address down if you'd like to speak, and we'll just take those in order. Yeah, and if, while we're getting names and stuff, if we want to, if staff wants to kind of go over what the, what the, the project is and, and why the hearing, why we're doing the hearing on it. Kind of probably repeat what you just said.
Apparently, there are some issues between nautical heights and the other subdivision, and it, and it deals with off-road use of some easements that haven't been developed that don't have anything to do with this slight vacation of this small segment, so.
So Tina, if you could, for the, the non-present people listening to, on the internet and also on, on, on the TV, if you could give them a background of what the, what the project, or what, what the intent is for the county to vacate their, their right-of-way on that Surf Sound Court?
There was a, one of the developments up there was supposed to be a gated development, and the developer never completed that portion of the project. And when the homeowners association came in to put the gate in place, it had to be an electric gate because of opening it from your vehicle and all, but there wasn't sufficient room where the county right-of-way ended. So they have requested that we move our right-of-way back to allow them more room to install the gate. And we have no use, no future use for that area. The utilities were contacted. They still have their rights of way. They don't have any objection either. They'll be provided a key if they need to get through there. So the county's interest in this is minimal. We're doing this as a convenience for the property owners. They can put the gate in, and that's several hundred less feet of county-maintained road for us. It would be maintained by the homeowners association.
So of the letters we've been receiving on this, the, or the two letters that, that I've received so far in regards to this, how does what we're doing now affect the constituents' complaints on that?
Apparently, there's a right-of-way that does not connect to the area we're concerned with, but it's been used in the past by one of the homeowners that rides his ATV. I, I think the public that's here could probably fill you in a little more accurately on that portion, but it has to do with issues that weren't resolved when those subdivisions were initially developed. So it does, our vacation of this segment does not affect the issues with that right-of-way that they're talking about, the easement that these two property owners are talking about. And I just received these letters this morning, so.
Okay. Questions from supervisors?
I have a, I don't know, it looks like a fairly obvious question, but does this, doesn't this right-of-way connect to another right-of-way?
It connects to the, is it nautical heights? I get my two subdivisions mixed up up there. It just connects to a private road. We, we have nothing. We just go up to the private road, the, the right-of-way ends. We're going to, we're requesting to move that right-of-way back, and that allows this, the development to move down, put their gate in, and have their gated community.
Well, I, I guess I'm confused on the drawing because it looks like there's a, it's a fairly lengthy portion. Is, is this three hundred and fourteen feet?
Yes. So we're moving down, and then that allows the gate, that allows a turnaround for.
But, but that right-of-way doesn't connect to another easement or another right-of-way?
Our right-of-way connects to the Surf Sound Court, and then it stops. It's a private subdivision. It's a private road in that subdivision.
So this isn't going to be a connecting route? I guess I don't know what, I guess I don't know what the other end of the right-of-way looks like or where it's coming from.
It comes up from Ocean View. We don't, we start at Ocean View and then go up to the private subdivision and stop.
Well, if, if you go down Ocean View and then to Surf Sound Drive, and then you turn on Surf Sound Court, from the point, and I guess it would be the eastern, on the eastern edge, does that not connect to another right-of-way or an easement? So, so don't we cut that access off if we vacate this?
The other subdivision doesn't have that access anyway. This is a private access for their private gated community. I, I don't think I'm understanding your question.
Well, it looks to me like the, the right-of-way, or the easement, or whatever it is, goes to the edge of the property line.
Correct.
And from the edge of that property line, is there a connecting easement or right-of-way at that point?
There is a road. That's the private road in the development. The parcel map just stopped there.
So if we vacate this section, does that close off that access to that other easement or a right-of-way?
No, it leaves that private road available to the development.
Now, I'm really confused because how, how do you get there? If the, if, if the right-of-way is vacated, how do we, how do you get from Surf Sound? And I don't, is that other easement, is it named, or is it still Surf Sound Court?
When you go up Surf Sound and turn on to Surf Sound Court, and, and I'm assuming this is the document you're looking at?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yes, okay. This continues up into the subdivision. We're, we're just moving it down. The, their maintained portion is moving down. Ours is being reduced. It's, we're not cutting them off. They still have access to this development. They just want to put a gate up.
Will that affect anybody else outside?
No one outside of that development.
Then what's the controversy here?
I guess we'll, at this point, we'll.
I think we need to listen to these people.
At this point, so Jeremy, if you could announce who the, the first person on the, on the list?
Don Bichetti.
Hi. I'm Don Bichetti. I own lot fourteen of the Surf Sound estates, I guess it would be. And I haven't seen the map that you've been referring to, but it actually, we're below that subdivision. They sort of connect. It's kind of hard to explain. And we have an easement that runs through there. My lot, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen, there is an easement that runs within my lot, kind of behind my lot. And then there's Surf, or Nautical Heights, that's on the other side of that easement. So I, I don't object to the abandonment. I object to the, I just want to make sure that we continue to have an access to that easement. And she's saying that it isn't affected, but it is. It cuts that easement off, unless it's addressed to where we still retain the right to go through there, through the portion that you guys abandoned, if you so choose, that we still have a right to go through that portion of the abandonment, which is now a county road. So I don't know if that kind of makes sense or not. I could draw a little map, I guess, or.
That's the map we have.
See, this does, this does need an address.
Right, that's where the vacated area they're talking about, right there.
Is this, where is lot fourteen?
Right there.
Up there.
Surf Sound Court, where is Surf Sound Court at?
No.
This road right here.
This one here. Okay, where, where do you guys want to, where's the abandonment portion?
Right there.
I think it's.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
Well, I think it's from this point down, just three hundred and fourteen feet.
See, I wish you had a map of, of this portion.
This portion, me too, because when you said, where's lot fourteen, that is not lot fourteen.
That's what says.
No, it's not lot fourteen. Trust me.
Okay.
That's a matter of fact.
Is this mine?
I don't know where.
I think this is my house right here. How old is this town? I just got it. This looks like my property right here. Yeah, it is. Okay, this is my property right here. This is Nautical Heights from here through here. This is Surf Sound Court. This is the cul-de-sac to where, this is the portion they want to. Yeah, right here.
So from here to here?
Yeah, from here to here. Here's my easement. My easement runs right through here, and then there's lot, whatever it is, thirteen, fifteen.
Where is Ocean View Drive on this?
Way down here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this is my property right here, and this is Surf Sound Court. My, my address is actually a Surf Sound Court address. Through that easement, when it was originally established, that was an option. It was originally supposed to be accessed through that easement and not, not through Surf Sound Drive. This is Surf Sound Court. It was originally supposed to be, as an option, to be accessed here. We had, you know, serious grading or whatever. This was an easier route, and that was an option to us. My easement says for ingress, egress, as do these other lots that aren't pictured here, that this easement runs through. So here's where they want to put the gate, which is fine. But I just want to make sure that, right now, this is county road, so I can get to here if I need to. When that changes, I still, as do my neighbors, want to make sure that we can still get from here to here under, I guess, county guidelines. We don't want to be any part of this association or subject to any of their fees, their rules, their doings, or, or whatever they have going. So I don't know if that makes a little bit more sense to you.
This is the section that looks to me like they want to abandon.
Yeah, from the cul-de-sac, and, and I don't know how far that.
Tina, this is, Tina, this is a private road, not a county road, is that right?
It's a private road.
Private road.
Subdivision, yes.
Right.
I think Mrs. Nelson could probably further.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to her, so, you know, she's, she's kind of familiar.
But how do you...
Well...
I'll explain to him in a second.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Now, this, this is the area that we're, you're talking about abandoning, is that correct?
Yes.
And so then, how does the, how does the, how does the traveler get down this road?
Okay, this is the main road right here, okay? This is where we're planning on putting the gate. This is, I'm sorry. This is the actual easement, the yellow line.
Right.
Okay, at this point right here is what's in question because apparently 20 years ago, when this road was cut in, the easement was obliterated, or the access point was obliterated. And it's probably, I don't know, 20 feet high. So, there's actually been no access for all these years to all these lots along here, other than coming through lot three of Nautical Heights. Over this 20-year period, there's been two occasions where they've been able to rectify this and they didn't...
Well, let's, let, I'm sorry. Let's, let's go ahead and, I, I need to have you at the mic because no one's hearing what you're saying except for us here at the board. And there is a public process that's gotta be, so...
Cindy Nelson, 175 Nautical Heights, Smith River. That section of road, over a 20-year period, there was no access point to that easement. So, there's lot three of Nautical Heights, which has been being used by the water company as well as the, the neighboring properties. The, the problem right now is not in moving that gate up, it's that access point to that easement, which no one wants to take that easement away, but they still wanted access to it. The owner of lot three doesn't want anyone accessing the easement. He has no problem with the easement, but he doesn't want people own, accessing his property through it. So, I met with the water company on Thursday, and they told me it's their responsibility to make sure that the Surf Sound property owners and the owners of that easement are able to have an access point to it. So, that's all there really was to it. Other than that, no one else has an objection to the gate being moved down. Nautical Heights is going to give them an access code to get into the subdivision, just to gain access to their easement.
And is that something written down? I mean, that, that, do we know if the, the other property owners, is there something in writing saying they're gonna have access to that, or is that something once we abandon the...
I actually...
And that'd be a question for staff on that. Is there some, are we, these other property owners are...
Yeah, actually, I have a letter here from, I believe I gave it in that group of paper. That's the letter from the property owner. And I tried to contact Myron from the water company yesterday to get something in writing from him that states that it was the responsibility of the water company to create that access point, but he did not return my call.
Okay. The, the owners of lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 currently have easement...
Yes.
...rights.
Yes.
And with the gate closed, or with the gate, with the, our abandonment, will, will the, their access be compromised?
No. From what I understand, once it's abandoned, that property goes back to the original owners, and those owners are going to grant an easement to everyone in Nautical Heights, as well as the property owners who are affected by this easement, and easement to get through to everything. And if the gate, the plan right now is the gate's gonna be open during the day. Everyone who needs to get to that easement or into Nautical Heights will have an access code.
So, for, for mechanical processes, would, we need to make sure the grant easement is in place prior to us abandoning that right-of-way?
Yes.
I think we would, wouldn't we?
I would suggest that we continue the public hearing until all the other documents are in order.
Yeah.
And then go ahead and act upon it at that point, just kind of, yeah.
Okay. Any other public comments at this point? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, you got, we're, we're gonna continue this hearing anyway, so we're not, we're not gonna come...
I don't say, I don't, I don't object to this, you know, I mean, for them to move their gate down there. I don't object to it. I just want to ensure that somewhere in the record...
That you got your right-of-way.
You can get that.
Yeah, okay. Unless there's any...
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, Supervisor Mcclair.
Of the 20-year use of this road, I have a quest, question for you, Tina. The 20-year historic access, is that prescriptive?
If it hasn't been perfected, that is judged to be a prescriptive right by a court and recorded, it isn't.
Okay.
I mean, people, people think they have prescriptive interests, and they, and they do unless someone challenges it. And if it were challenged in court, maybe they would say, "No, you don't have a prescriptive easement." It depends on time lapse, the use, who's paying taxes. So, there's several considerations on, on how these, these prescriptive easements are actually perfected.
Okay.
Okay, so, I guess we have direction back to staff at this point. We'll continue the hearing and, and let's make sure everything's in place, so folks do not lose their right-of-way in the process once the county potentially vacates that, that area. So, unless any supervisor's...
Do you want this back for the next meeting? I'm asking the, one of the presenters if he would want this material back until the next meeting. Okay.
And I would suggest, maybe not the next meeting, but one beyond to, because they'll, we'll need some additional descriptions.
Because you're gonna do grant these, is that what you're gonna do?
Right.
Okay. So, since that's probably the most interesting public hearing I've been in a while, I'm gonna go ahead and continue the public hearing to the next one, and we'll do a roundtable next time on it. So, see, Leslie, there's a little comedy for you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, folks, we appreciate you showing and going through the process, and obviously, there's some more things that need to be addressed before we can make a decision. Okay, so at this point, we're going to, since we're past the other timed item, 1110, presentation by Paul Kelly, North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, Policy Review Panel Member regarding the NCIR WAMP and future funding opportunities. And I think, is it Supervisor McLaren, Supervisor Hemmingson that you...
I, but Zach is the one who participates.
Okay.
For me, I don't...
Great. Good morning.
Welcome.
I'm Paul Kelly, and thank you Chairman Sullivan for the introduction, and it's a great pleasure to be here before you. Really quick, I'd like to, I've got some slides and a few handouts, but as, as you mentioned, I actually have been an active member of the PRP for the North Coast IRWIMP in the past, and I served as a county supervisor in Sonoma County for 16 years. Recently, wizened up and didn't run for reelection, and not, not saying anything against those of you running right now. I'm very honored to, to have you as a representative. And then, I'm doing some consulting work, and came to me through mostly the county of Humboldt to work with the Integrated Regional Water Management Team, West Coast Watersheds, Karen Gaffney, Lisa Renton, Catherine Gledhill, to help not only facilitate, but get out and communicate, and then help with increasing the success of the North Coast IRWIMP. As mentioned before, two colleagues on either side of you serve on our Policy Review Panel, and we're very pleased to have them and very appreciative of their active participation. I would mention that we have a Technical Review Committee, which includes Jim Barnes from the city of Crescent City, and then Zach Larson from the Smith River watershed coordination, which was here earlier, as, as I saw. So, that's a, we're very pleased to have them on, on, let me just see. Fantastic. This wireless mouse is quite powerful. So, thank you again for just having me. I'd just like to say a few words about the program overview, give you a little bit of the history, some of the governance aspects of, of what we're doing on, on the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, and then talk about some ongoing funding and next steps. Push the wrong button there. There we go. Most of you are aware, but for those that are watching, in 2002, the Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Program was established. Proposition 50 helped create the IRWIMP program as, as well as SB 1672. It's currently administered through the Department of Water Resources, and its main intent is to collaboratively manage all aspects of water resources within a region. And it crosses jurisdictional, watershed, and political boundaries, and one of the reasons for the creation of that is to help put together multiple regions. You can see from the map that there's some of the other regions out there, and some of the financial resources that have gone into some of those regions. Prop 84 recently has a funding allocations as well. So, there's regional funds in there, around 900 million. That gets split throughout the state. There's some interregional funds as well as, and so the North Coast region gets 37 million, and, and then there's still about 25 million remaining for some future funding opportunities. Just the North Coast, we've been very successful, started in 2004, putting together not only the regional boundaries that you see there, but also working on the policy committee. And really, under, under what we think is an important component, which is the whole is greater than the sum of the parts. It's been, I think, most of our experiences, you've had your federal representative here, and we in Sonoma County have had that as well. We feel somewhat isolated up here on the North Coast and sometimes ignored, and oftentimes overlooked. And so, it was really felt that putting together a greater organization carries more weight, provides some greater influence, and I think it's been proven out. The North Coast region consists of York County, and then Humboldt, Trinity, Mendocino, and portions of Siskiyou, Modock, and Sonoma County. As mentioned before, we have a PRP and a TPRC, which is the Technical Policy Review Committee. And we also have some tribal representatives that are selected through the North Coast Tribal Consortiums, and that's been defined in the, in the MoMoo, which is the Memorandum of Mutual Understanding. It's a non-binding agreement that describes the goals and decision-making of the organization and of the, and the framework of the planning process. And I think you're, might be aware that over the last two review periods of the North Coast IRWIMP, we've been ranked either one or two in the state, which is very important. And there's a lot of participation through the website, and I would encourage you, I'll put it up there next or later, to make sure you sign up on the website and get the updates. I mentioned Policy Review Committee and the Technical Review Committee. I just want to mention here that it's mostly the emphasis on a transparent decision-making, but also regional equity and collaboration and fairness, which is some of the key components of, of the decision-making process. As I mentioned before, there's policy side and the technical side. Some of the objectives that we have, enhance some odd populations, you can see the list here. Again, I want to emphasize, ensure our regional equity and interregional cooperation, promoting economic development, adequate water supply, minimizing impacts on, on the environment. And I think these are some of the key aspects as we move forward, and there'll be more objectives that we can look at in the future. Some of our accomplishments, governance and leadership, I think whenever we've had an opportunity to go to the state and talk to the Department of Water Resources, they pay attention to the North Coast now much more than they ever did before, not the least of which because their own people have ranked our Integrated Regional Management Plan, numbers one and two, when going before the state. Total of 270 projects had been identified over the period of time, looking out for projects, $410 million to date as a need. Clearly, we don't have that, enough, that amount of money yet, but it's a good goal to continue to work for. A regional suite of projects, 94 of them, are mentioned here, with more than $38 million in watery and energy-related grant funding, and that's leveraged more than $88 million of local matching funds. There's also some dollars out there, not mentioned on this slide, $3 million in planning through the Department of Water Resources for small and disadvantaged community water and wastewater service providers. And I'll mention some of that later. Just some of the projects here in, in York County, as you were the head, Hunter Smokehouse Nonpoint Sediment Reduction Project, $280,000, the state park resource and preserves prime salmon and habitat. You can see what the components of that, but I think that's just an example of a beneficiary project that have been accomplished here in the county. Some of the other ones that just wanted to highlight, Crescent City Wastewater Treatment Reclaimed Water Project, this is recycled water for agricultural use. Prop 50 funding, $935,000, and expected completion the end of next year. Crescent City Rainy Collector Variable Frequency Drive Project, this is actually through the IRWIMP, but it's mostly a California Energy Commission, efficient, energy-efficient block grant, $43,000. That project's been completed, the Delnart RCD Agricultural Enhancement Program. This is a, this is a different funding source than the Prop 50, this is Prop 84, and that's $255,000. And as mentioned here, it's currently a contract under development, but the goal of this project is to help Delnart County dairies in the Smith River and Lake Earl Watersheds to improve their waste management systems and work with not only the RCD, but the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Some of the other aspects, just the participation in the North Coast IRWIMP, clearly, we have a legacy of success as Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. We have commitment to the transparency, as mentioned before. There's also some technical assistance and some really real help through that. I probably should have mentioned, maybe it's mentioned later in the slide, that the county of Humboldt helps with the administration of the contract with the state. So, when the state releases money through the proposition dollars, they go to the county of Humboldt, and they release that money out to our different applicants and recipients of those dollars. So, there's good contract administration. There's also real help for some of those small community wastewater, or community water facilities that just don't have the staff to handle dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's for the state of California, which we know is just, you know, a snap. Not really. It's very challenging just to get any money out of them. Some of our other applications and funding, just currently mentioned here is our half-a-million dollars Prop 50 that did get completed, a Prop 84, a million-dollar award, which is under a two-year contract, that's part of the planning process that's going on now, really to get us prepared for the next couple of rounds. There's a Sustainable Communities Grant that's been awarded. There's some implementation grants, Prop 50, as I mentioned before, $30 million. Prop 84, round one, which is $8.2 million. And in preparation for some of the next steps, which is our Phase Three Plan Development, again, that's where some of those objectives could possibly get enhanced and expanded. Round two and three, call for projects. As you can see, that's pretty close to $25 million over the next two rounds of funding out of Prop 84. We expect that the Department of Water Resources is gonna want some applications by the end of this year. Again, this is one of the reasons why I'm out, going to all the different counties and different areas to encourage folks to be thinking about this. If you've got some projects in your communities and in your counties that are gonna need some resources for the objectives laid out here, those applications are gonna come forward. And then clearly, there's a larger funding resource coming in the spring of 2014. On the bottom, you can just see some of the aspects of what we're working on. There's a conference coming up, there's some stakeholder trainings, and in preparation, who knows if there'll ever be another water bond. As you read the machinations of what goes on the state, they have one on and then they have one off of the ballot. But if they ever have one on, anything like the one that's been drafted, that's another, probably $42 million for the North Coast, for the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. I do have just some of the resources mentioned on this slide. You see our website. I encourage people to log on, put in their email address, and, and get their email updates whenever they come out. I also have a couple of resources that I'm gonna leave behind for the board, but they're also on the website. One is the one-page sheet, just talking about the, the plan and all of the, the region, including some of the projects that mentioned on the slides. And then as part of that, disadvantaged communities and, and other, and in cooperation and collaboration to DWR, there is going to be a little workshop coming up, a couple of them, one on May 23rd and 24th, one in Ukiah, one in Eureka, one's related to ethics, conflict of interest and policies, and then the other is sanitary issues for districts and surveys. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to get before you and to, to share some of the aspects of the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, but more importantly, to thank your two members here, Supervisor Hemmingson and... to thank your two members here, Supervisor Hemmings and McClure, excuse me, for their strong participation while I'm trying to reach and get some of these handouts for you.
Okay. Any questions from supervisors?
I just have a comment. Paul, thanks for coming. You know, I've been kind of advocating for this outreach, especially in disadvantaged communities like ours, where we don't always have even the staff to come, to get a project together. And so now I think that that could possibly be available to us, and with this new outreach, we can be looking for projects that, and we can get some help with them. So I really appreciate it, and thanks for coming up.
I really appreciate that, and if you don't mind, I'd just make a comment that, you know, as a former county supervisor who had a lot of little districts and little challenging issues within my district, probably the greatest frustration was the lack of resources to help them out, and I think this is an aspect of what we're trying to do with this.
Excellent.
So, in the disadvantaged, in the disadvantaged community outreach portion, what exactly would we expect? We, you know, came up and I said, you know, I have a really great idea for a disadvantaged community to get a system and get everybody off septic.
Right.
Because they're going right into the river. So what can we expect in assistance in putting that project together?
It's a very good question. The first component is that there's a planning grant here, as I mentioned before, there's actually some workshops for those folks. Second of all, there's, through not only myself, but all of the contacts up there, if there's a request, we actually have some resources to get some people out to meet with those communities and to help them put together what it would take. As you know, sometimes you've got to create a community services district, and as a former LAFCO member, I know how you go through that process, but there's really help to actually guide for that. The implement, and then the other thing is, is to get in preparation for those implementation grants, because that's where some of the real dollars are going to be to actually...
For two fourteen.
Yeah, and get through the process, get the resources.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good, I appreciate that.
Well, we televise, and I would like our districts to, like, oh...
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors?
Paul, I want to thank you for coming up. Sometimes we, you know, due to the size that we don't always get out, and I know Supervisor Hemmings has mentioned to me before about wanting to make some, a better coordination with the North Coast Integrated, well, I think you had a...
Alphabet soup, yes.
Yes. We appreciate your work, and we definitely hope we can work with you on that and get some projects done up here, so.
You bet. Well, we've got a legacy of some success, so we just need to keep working on it. I'm going to leave these with your clerk to hand out, not only to yourself, but I've got a few copies, and feel free to make some more.
Cool.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Paul.
You betcha.
Any public comment? Okay, no public comment. Emily, you don't want to say anything for the...
No.
Okay. Okay, so, not right now. That's good coming from the reporter, so I'm sure they've said something later on. So we're going to go to item twenty-four, Considered Miscellaneous Legislative and Budget Management to the County of Delnort, authorize chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Director Blatnick did want to get up and give us an update on what's happening at the state on the social services side.
Right, it's actually on the, regarding managed care for Medi-Cal Health, and in the governor's budget, he's proposing to save up to eight-point-eight million dollars in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, by managing the twenty-eight counties that still are unmanaged in the Medi-Cal health area. Now, in Medi-Cal, mental health, we are managed, and the county operates that program. In healthcare, it's far larger, and the twenty-eight counties have been going along on a fee-for-service basis. Bills are sent directly to the state, state pays the bill. Well, the governor has recognized that he can save some funding by managing the rest of the twenty-eight counties. Well, the question is, how does the state intend on doing that? One mechanism is to just go ahead and contract, like with Anthem Blue Cross, who currently does CMSP for thirty-four counties. And that's one mechanism that they can do. Another one, which we prefer, and I say we, there are twenty-eight counties that are out here right now, and many of us have been talking to each other via a regional hospital group that represents northern and central counties. And I've also been in contact with the Open Door Clinic and with the hospital here, Sutter Coast. And we would prefer another option, which is, there's a company that's operated, it's a public entity, it's not a private entity like Blue Cross, called Partnership for Healthcare of California. And they were originally out of Solano County, and they're operated now in about four or five counties, and they're interested in taking the rest, they're interested in taking eight of us in northern California. On the coast, they already have Mendocino County. Humboldt would like to be part of the partnership, Delnort, Siskiyou, Modock, down to Shasta, there's about eight of us that would like to join in this partnership. Essentially, they're going to operate the same way, except for one significant difference, which I know you'll understand immediately. Anthem has their own board of directors, none of us will ever be ever serving on their board of directors. The partnership is designed in a way that it has local, has county representatives on their board, and currently, there are three or four representatives from each of the counties that serve on their board of directors. They set policy, they make the financial decisions, they run the operations. And without any fiscal risk, the risk is with the organization, not with the board of directors. So we would prefer that option, of course, and we understand there may not be four or five representatives if they add eight more counties, but at least maybe two or three. And the board of supervisors would be designating those members. Also, the board must pass an ordinance to join the partnership. The board would also have to pass an ordinance to join Anthem, Blue Cross, or whatever company the state chose. So the board does have a significant say in this matter. Now, it's possible that the state may leave you with only one choice, which is the private choice or nothing. And nothing could mean that no one gets healthcare who's on Medi-Cal and Delnort County, so they could leave you with a very difficult situation. Things are sort of moving along okay, but recently, it's come to our attention that it's a little bit more complicated, our proposal for the state. It means that they would have to divide up the twenty-eight counties, peel off eight up north here to join the partnership. We're not sure exactly how they would handle the Central Valley counties, as well as the southern counties. But at this point, we're concerned that they may move ahead with the simple solution, just put out a contract with all twenty-eight counties to a company that wants to operate those. The partnership is not interested in twenty-eight counties, only those that are contiguous with their current counties that they serve. And so what may have to occur is, we may actually need legislation. And we don't know if it's going to get to that extent, but that's why I'm here today, is this is all coming down very quickly. In fact, we may even have to, staff may have to work very diligently between now and even the next board meeting. But we wanted to give you a heads-up and let you know that we'll be hearing more about this in the days to come, and we'll keep you posted, and we'll probably need to be working with our legislators at the state level, and we may need some letters from you, so on. And even maybe our statewide lobbyists, our Peterson consultants and others involved.
What was the name of this again, partnership?
It's Partnership for Healthcare of California. P-H-C.
Okay, another question. Now, when you talk about these eight counties...
Yes.
That is separating us from whichever ones might be already CMSP, or might be in their own group.
Correct, that's right. This would be just those eight counties, plus I think it's six, or four or six that they have currently, so there'd be about twelve of us in this sort of regional network for Medi-Cal.
Oh, this is just for Medi-Cal.
This is not CMSP.
Right.
CMSP is going to stay separate through that thirty-four-county mechanism that's been successful. However, we're looking at sort of a different, a different regional makeup for the Medi-Cal program, which does not have any county dollars in it, but it has a significant effect on essentially every healthcare provider in the county and many residents.
Sue, have you talked with Wes yet?
There have been conversations with Wes, he's on board, but I haven't personally spoke to him, not yet.
But he's on board.
But he's on board.
And how about Noreen?
She's also aware of it, of the issues.
Well, I know if we don't get it straightened out and it goes all one, we will have providers here that will be unable to continue to accept the Medi-Cal patients, and that will be the problem.
The interesting thing about partnership is, they respond to county needs, they have specific options for various counties. When they understand a county has a certain uniqueness to it, they're able to make those decisions to just tailor it for a particular county. I'm not sure that would happen if we were part of some huge...
Of Anthem, of Blue Cross?
Yeah.
As our manager, no.
Right.
All right, thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
So could you direct us to move forward?
Yeah, if you could work to direct staff to work together on this, bring something back to the next board meeting.
At this point, any other miscellaneous legislative and budget matters?
Quickly on legislation, we're following a number of spot bills similar to what the report was at the last meeting, everything from biomass incentives to irrigation. And at this point, we're not in need of any letters of support directly from the board, but we'll present those at the next meeting if they come up. Budget-wise, I believe the board's aware that the governor's revise came out. We've been meeting in our second round with departments that have had the largest deficit for the upcoming year in their requested budgets, and trying to come up with solutions and plans to be able to reduce those deficits, so that we have something to be able to present to the board that will be balanced. At this point, once again, we'll be waiting to see what happens with the state and what those backfills for public safety might look like. Again, this year, there's ramifications from the general vote in November, so we'll see what happens. Politically, there's not much that's going to happen before June fifth, and then after June fifth, we expect a scramble regarding the state budget. And one of those issues continues to be AB 109 that I mentioned earlier, and the allocations. And the, there was a concerted effort to put together an allocation that worked for everybody, and it still does not appear to be adequate funding to deal with the new realignment program, primarily through the jail. Probation is the lead on that, and there was, there's a proposal right now to take the most advantageous funding mechanism for these counties, but again, it doesn't, doesn't offset the loss of the grant program that the jail's going, or has lost at this point. So we'll be working with the chief probation officer and the sheriff and our advocates to see what we can do to come up with something, and also dealing through probably the Department of Finance for some transitional funding to get us through the next couple of years to enact the realignment plan. I think everybody understands it's going away from incarceration to monitoring through probation. And I think there's a plan in place that has been adopted, and now it's about how we get to that plan and what funding is made available through the state to actually enact the realignment. It's going to be an interesting couple of years, this year in particular, because it's the second year. Last year was a reaction, this year is going to be how they deal with the reaction to last year. And I will give a report to the board on the twelfth that's a little more detailed regarding the meetings that we've had, and then on the second meeting in June, I'll present you with a recommended budget for spending authority at that point. I don't expect to have a final budget till probably in September. We have to get our year ends, which typically happen the middle of August, so that we know what our final fund balance is, positive or negative, and so we're going to be working on this, I would suspect, through, into September.
Okay. Thanks, Chair. Any other thing from supervisors?
No.
Okay, at this point, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Where am I?
Oh, wait, wait, what am I?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, Emily, still...
Oh, Emily's still, Emily, you hit your public comment.
We're going to item twenty-five, approve and authorize chair to sign a letter to the United States Forest Service regarding the coordination meeting of May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, Smith River National Recreation Area Restoration and Motorized Travel Management Plan.
This, this came as a request from the forest supervisor, wanted to make sure, I guess, that they didn't miss anything, that they wanted our issues put down in writing. I think we've hit most of them, we always seem to leave out something, and so if anybody can think of something that we missed, that they think should be in there, now would be the time. We need to get this letter off to them. Hopefully, we can get, get an extension, so that they can get the proper points on the maps that should be on there, so that the public can comment on.
Even the new Kelsey Trail is not on.
It's pretty limiting.
I, I think that we should send the letter, but I do have a suggestion, is that where we start the letter, that we're having our statement of our opinion on the travel management plan, but I would put right there in big, capitalized and bold, requesting extension of the scoping comment period. I wouldn't, I, we can still end the letter with the request, but we want everyone who first sees this to know that we are requesting for the extension, so they can't say, oh, we didn't realize that's what you were asking for.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, that sounds like a good idea.
And then I think that we should add, not only were there roads, but there were trails that have been left off of those maps.
They're only addressing motorized...
Oh.
Motorized.
That's the reason they didn't, but they still should put all the trails on there.
I don't disagree with you, I don't...
We, in our, in our coordination meeting, we requested they put everything on the map, and not to leave anything, because otherwise, if, literally, if you don't put it on there, it's going, at some point, it's going, it doesn't exist. So we want to make sure the trails, the dispersed campsites, the, any of the access points are on that map. Otherwise, it's not as transparent process, if that's the case, and I'm sure the Forest Service wants to be as transparent as possible.
I think one other point that was made at that meeting was about the public's involvement once this gets to the formal scoping, and that if something's not on the map, that the public doesn't have the opportunity to be able to comment on it, because they don't know that it's there.
Right.
And that was part of the point also.
Okay.
You know, I wonder if we should, because we all have sets of those maps, if we should just hang something up in the, in the FLYN Center, and make sure that people that are interested in what's happening come and look at those maps.
It can be done, we've made them open to anybody that has come in and talked to us, but yeah, we could, we could actually put those up somewhere.
Yeah, I think it might be a good idea to hang them and let the public know.
See if we can do that, probably in the Community Development Department or down in that area.
Yeah, or just, just on a wall that's kind of free-flowing, but that someone can come in, because we know people that know the backcountry like the back of their hand, that can walk in and say, oh, are you kidding me? You know?
I do know someone that has traveled back there so much back, I think I've shown a couple of you that picture he took, that rock out there, but he's offered to take me all over some of these roads and tell you where...
We did do a field trip one time onto the backcountry with the Forest Service, that was very, it was really good. Well, it was really good, it was, we had probably four or five different rigs, and everyone would go to different places, and they would talk about what this area is and what roads are there. But that might be a really good idea for us to ask the two-by-two to initiate with the Forest Service that we have a field trip to the backcountry.
We've requested that, once it comes out, that's what we want to do.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to send the letter.
Move to approve.
It's been moved in second, any public comment? There you go, there's your chance. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, and we will send the letter, and now we will adjourn the meeting.